All rise. Court of Oakland County is now in session. Stephen Barlow presiding.
I'll ask Phillip if he would please lead us to prayer.
Thank you Lord for this day. Thanks for all this good meeting and be to the public for it. Go out and be good and trust him. Amen to the world.
Ms. Robbie, would you lead us in the front?
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I put Phillip on the spot. I got the pastors association to fill in as sending the pastor in to do the indication. And our pastor hadn't showed up yet. And so at the last minute, I said Phillip, you do it. And he's like, uh. I was like Phillip, say it again. Lovely to put him on the spot. All right, uh, we all, the roll call, Ms. Victoria, if you would.
Randall Boswell.
Here.
Roger Carr.
Here.
Jesse Bowman.
Here.
Geraldine Walker.
Here.
Phillip Tally.
Here.
Lee Richards.
Sorry.
Patrick McCurdy.
Here.
Jeff Long.
Here.
Robbie Melton.
Here.
Shane Walker.
Here.
Donna Savage.
Here.
Cindy Robbins.
Here.
Gil McCowen.
Here.
Don Rickart.
Here.
Greg Nivens.
Here.
All, all present. All right, the approval from the minutes from September the ninth is motion. Cindy Robbins makes a motion. Do I have a second? Uh, Phillip, second. Uh, any discussion? All right, no discussion being had. All four say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Motion passed. Uh, this time what we, uh, I have decided to do instead of, uh, questions pertaining to the public being put at the very end, uh, we will entertain the questions from the public at the first. And the reason why I'm doing this is because if you have any concerns that address the agenda, and it has to address the agenda when you come up, uh, we follow the Robert Rules Board. And doing so, when you do that, you are not to call anybody out. Uh, it has to be a question pertaining to the agenda. And you ask it to the entire, uh, the county legislative body. Uh, and like I said, it's to clarify what you have, if you have anything to, uh, bring forward to that. Uh, if it does not pertain to the agenda, uh, we invite you to come to the committee meetings and speak with us there. Uh, but what is on the agenda today, uh, is, uh, the questions that we will allow. Uh, and you get three minutes. And if anybody would like to come up, I'm not going to call anybody out by name. I don't have a list. I'll open it up to, to you guys, but, uh, who would be the first? I want you to call your name and where you're from.
Do they all have a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes, the agenda has been online.
I thought they need to see my copy, they couldn't.
And they, some have, uh, yes ma'am?
Can you tell us where to find the agenda online?
On the website?
Yeah. Oh, so just go to the Overton County.
It's on the website. Yes, same place you would find the agenda for the commission, you'd find it for the court.
Okay, I found the calendar, but not the agenda.
Yes, the agendas are on there as well.
Okay. Or add on.
It.
Cause I looked through all of that, I can't find it.
It, it's under, I don't know if it's under the announcements or under the commission meeting. I, I haven't got anything to pull it up to show you right now, but if you get with me afterwards, we'll pull it up. And I'll, I'll show you how to get to it, okay? If you would, please stand and come to the front and state your name, where you're from, and, uh, address the commission.
I'm Lois Armstrong. Do you know me? I'm from Richmond. Uh, when that, uh, when you fixed the GM over at Hardest Chapel, do you know how much it cost to?
That's not on the agenda.
Yeah, well, I, I thought you said it was.
It was sixty-four hundred dollar item.
That, the one thing that's on there is for two dehumidifiers. Uh, what, what's, what's the question?
How much did you spend and who done that work?
How much did we spend on what?
To fix and the floors over and, uh, to do the work.
Okay, our maintenance department done the work ourself. And I don't have the number sitting in front of me because I didn't prepare for that question because it's not on the agenda.
Well, I thought you said it was. It wasn't on the agenda.
What is on the agenda is for dehumidifiers to go, uh, under the floor, but not the cost of the repairs.
Did you go under the floor?
Did I go under the floor? I did not personally go under the floor, no ma'am.
Do you know who did?
Yeah, we had several people go under the floor. The maintenance department went under the floor and we had universal pest control go under the floor. Um, we had, I think it, I don't know if Coolwell Heat and Cool went under there or not. But yes, they went under the floor to look at the moisture, to look at the mold, to look at termites, to look at all different kinds of things.
Well, did you know my son and three more men fixed that floor over?
I'm sorry, I did not.
Well, they did.
Okay.
And the county needs to stay.
Was that, which floor are we talking about?
You know where the double doors are, the white double doors? Do you even, have you been?
Yes, I've, I've, I've been there.
Well, right in front of that.
Okay, see, we're talking about two different things.
County paid for the money, uh, they paid for the wood.
Right.
But they fixed it because they like to play volleyball and they have dinners in there, they have showers in there.
They find a lot of pickleball over there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do.
They, they have ongoing things and, uh, but we're, we're talking about di- a different floor because we're talking about a different room. You're talking about when you first enter. Where you're talking about the entryways where your son and them fixed, cause we have recently fixed two other floors, one in the kitchen and one in another.
Well, I didn't know, I just wanted to know how much it cost and cost them. I know they done the work for it.
Okay.
It didn't cost the county a dime for none of that.
Thank, thank them very much.
Well, they didn't thank, but the lady over there that opens it up and closes it.
Okay.
But not by the county. But I just wanted.
Okay.
I didn't know it wasn't on the agenda. I thought Connie said it was.
What was on the agenda was to approve the dehumidifiers to go under the floor to keep it from rotting.
I know that you said something like that, but I didn't know what.
Would there be another?
I believe y'all know, but my name is Scott Detheridge and I live in Richmond. And the first question I have, and I apologize because I've always thought since I have a couple of degrees, I could navigate a website pretty well. But I've looked towards over high and lows since forty-eight hours before this meeting and can't find that agenda posted there. The second thing is, I have a question on the agenda. You only receive one bid for police bills. Where are you advertising for bids when things are excess of ten thousand dollars as I heard you said you're required to do?
We're, we're required to advertise. We put it in the papers, we put.
Which paper? The Overton County News, the Nashville paper, the Knoxville paper? Cause I have a lot of trouble believing you only got one card to get to bid on a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the bills.
Okay.
The next thing is, looking through these papers, why do I as a taxpayer need to buy a cellphone for a truck driver, a litter grant director, and to have his parlaying around? I don't believe those people are that important to you to communicate with at a moment's notice.
So your question is why do they deserve to have a cellphone?
Yes, sir.
So if we have to get ahold of them, if we can get ahold of them.
Do your trucks not have radios in them? That's how most people contact their truck drivers when they're out on the road.
Sorry.
And you, you need to contact the litter grant director on a moment's notice. What is so important that that has to be done?
Uh, because he has prisoners waiting.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Would there be another? All right, moving on.
I'm Geraldine, y'all will wait. We had to replace the crowd tonight.
Thanks, sir.
Me too. And, uh, I'd like to ask each and every one of you, it's all with me. Just don't have nothing to do with nothing right now. It's just the past.
It's gotta be on the agenda, Mr. Williams.
It's easy to sweep stuff on the rug when you don't, when it comes out and you find out about it.
Can you get to your question? I'm sorry.
I just put the newspaper out where everybody can get that way.
That's fine.
Okay. That's thanks. Okay. Of course, he, he said something about phones.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm like him. I don't, I don't think everybody needs a phone. The county paid for them. I hope everybody has a phone.
Okay.
Okay. I think about the two minutes, um, or three minutes to talk before we say it. I think very much the topic of order, do you think it is?
Uh, this was, uh, voted on, uh, last year, I do believe, uh, whenever they set the rules and regulations.
Who voted on it?
Everybody.
Other people, just, just the committee. I think we need to have term limits on everybody who's on this committee. As well as your job too. Uh, I think two, two, two terms, you're half, it needs some new blood. We need a bunch of new blood this year.
Okay. We'll move on. Number seven, consider approval for the cellphone personal, uh, the cellphone policy, the personal policy, and the social media, uh, media policy approved by the Ethics and Policy Committee. Need a motion and a second. Motion by Patrick. Second, uh, Randall, any discussion?
Yeah, I think we need to pass this. There's too many people that got questions on this. I have questions. I think Geraldine, don't you have some questions on it?
Yes.
Uh, some of the verbiage that's in there, I think it needs to be redug.
Okay. What can, which, which on which policy?
Geraldine, what are you on?
Well, mine was like theirs, cause I had several people talking to me about everybody that was getting a cellphone and the, uh, taxpayers paying for it. And then the other one, I had asked about this already to, uh, Stephen and to John about the holidays that, uh,
Sorry.
everybody, all county offices are getting except for emergency services. Now that was kind of explained to me that emergency services, their holidays are twelve hour shifts. Where the counties are eight. And if you tally that up, the county offices are getting like twenty-eight more hours than emergency services get. So I talked to Stephen about it. He said we can amend that at a later time, but, so that was my two things that I saw in there.
Mine is the, the verbiage that's gone in there about, uh, uh, you can't be, uh, how was it said? The che- uh, you can't be fired over illegal activity.
She changed that.
Yes, sir.
It's still in there. For what I said.
Cause she changed it right now.
Yeah, Patrick addressed it that and it has been changed.
It's right here, it's changed.
What are you just on?
That's cell phones and which, uh,
Some page one of the, uh, the general files. Those better.
It's a kids' hall.
She's talking about.
It's, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be legal. I mean, it should be just. It's quite brave to say, but they should not be terminated, but you need a legal purpose, it's including, but not named it to raise age, gender, sex, national origin, disability. That, uh, that's just a given. That, that's what the neighbor bodies, that's, that's the law. You can be discriminated, fired, that, and a legal purpose. It just doesn't, uh, either just take a legal.
In this agenda, is this the updated purpose? Cause I know you changed it, so. So this is the updated one that we have.
It still says illegal.
Ms. Lillian, does, does it have to say you can't, you shall not be terminated for an illegal purpose? It has to say that? In the verbiage, Jay Jay?
You can't, you can't cockfire people for illegal purposes. And those are the illegal purposes. You can't fire somebody because they're black or because they're female.
That's not illegal.
That's not, that's not illegal.
That's, that, that's not illegal, that's un- un- illegal.
Can't be terminated.
You can't fire somebody because they're black.
Yeah, that's discrimination.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's discrimination, yeah.
So that's, that's clarified.
You can't be, you can't be terminated for any dis- for any discrimination.
Exactly. That's the federal law and we all know that.
Yeah.
So I don't understand what the problem is.
Illegal just another.
It just means you can't hire for illegal activity.
What third question was?
It's like somebody that don't give hard. No, they can't.
Okay, um. It just needs. That, that makes me be a. Let's. Let's take it back.
Well, if the committee wants to change it, you need to submit it to me and I'll look at the law and see. But what happens is I, no one will submit me the verbiage that you want. So, uh, if you'll do that, I will look at the law and you'll submit your request.
Okay, so, uh, whenever we go to speed, let's, let's be recognized before, because we got everybody coming in once and, uh, so let's be recognized, uh, before we can, uh, do that, please, uh. I'll raise my second on it and send it back to the committee to be reworked. Okay, um. So, motion on, the table needs to be sent back to the committee to be reworked. Is that what the motion is on the table? Patrick.
Before we go, are we gonna split them out one by one and get maybe, get one passed if anybody has a problem with it or you? Keep all three together?
Well, we got them all grouped in together now.
Okay, keep all together, all right.
So we'll.
I'll raise my motion.
Resend the motion. Uh, Patrick rescinded the motion and, uh, Randall rescinded the second. We need a motion to send back to committee.
I'll make your motion statement.
Okay, yeah.
Patrick rescinded the motion.
Okay.
Randall rescinded second. Jesse made a motion to send back to committee. Second, Cindy second. All four say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any questions?
Only, uh, vacation time, can somebody explain that? Cause I've heard, you know, they wanna buy back leaves and you can still carry some over.
We'll have to rework it in the committees. We'll rework it in the committees.
Nothing said on that.
There's nothing said on that. Okay, um. Next, consider approval for education quarter with a report ending June thirtieth, approved by the Budget Committee. Robbie made the motion, seconded by Donna. Any discussion? None being had. Ms. Victoria, can you call Robb please?
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Don Rickart.
Yes.
Gil McCowen.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Phillip Tally.
Yes.
Geraldine Walker.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes.
Roger Carr. Roger Carr.
Yes.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
All four motion passes. So the next part, we're going to acknowledge the receipt of the twenty twenty-five budget approval letter from the Tennessee Comptroller of Treasury. And it, uh, was acknowledged by the Budget Committee. Uh, just wanted to let you know that the Comptroller exempted past her budget. Y'all know that, uh.
Do I have a question on that one too?
Okay.
On this one part, page fourteen, this one, I thought when it went past that, you know, with the increase and everything, we would have, uh, what is it, three months or six months? Extra.
Preact.
Uh, it's on page fourteen, um, on the cash, cash management.
On station every show.
But this one part says that we have less than one month's average spending. And then down here at Lowen, in their letter, it says that there's, uh, it just says less than two months.
Are you, are you talking about, uh?
It's the letter from the Comptroller's saying it's in here.
The fund balance, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
We have to keep, uh, somewhere around three months. Three, they recommend three to six months of, uh, in the fund balance. Because we get taxes, uh, in from October, uh, February and Sunday morning. And they recommend you keep the fund balance, uh, to help in the times that you don't get paid and catch something comes up. So, uh, I'm trying to find here where you're talking from.
Where the one part is under the cash management and the other one's on the fund balance. Yeah, it was, um, I know.
At the very top. When the cash management was talking about the highway.
The cash, the ending cash balance for the Highway Public Works Fund is, the fund appears to have sufficient cash during fiscal year to remain balanced. So that's the highway and public work.
That's the highway.
That's the highway department. So they get their funds, uh, in a little different than we do. Uh, so there's comes by taxes and things like that. So it's kinda hard to, guess make exactly how much, uh, of that cash that's coming in. They'll kinda tell you a little bit, but you get taxes like when you buy gas here in the state or in our county, that taxes go to our county. And, uh, and I think you get so much on the tax and, and, and it's just different. They starting to charge for electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles because they share the same road system that we have, but they don't pay us much fuel tax. But they, that was the highway and, uh, public works, what that was talking about there. What was the next part changed?
It was just that next section. The first one says less than one month, the other one says less than two.
Under fund balance.
Um, Darrell, when, when we went over that budget, y'all had a fund balance, uh, insufficient for the year, correct?
Correct. Then the summer month is when they do most of the work and the money is, all the money that highway park get, getting is the cash, the gas tax cash at the, federal highway. So it don't come in on a regular basis. So you have to project, uh, where you're at and, roads that were intended, uh, paved roads and all that, you couldn't keep up with the balance as well as you should because we had, we were gonna pass the budget, that way we'd get what we stated, we'd be getting passed. So that's kinda do everything in all this year, so, uh, we're still playing catch-up with all that. The, the gas tax money's down, I don't know how much, it's about, uh, it's, it's short, uh, compared to last year, but, uh, that's how it is done. And then in, in what it says, that for all departments to keep their, uh, their fund balance to cover their costs. And that's usually two to three months or, uh, a lot of, so. With that, that's just, that's the first, uh, funding with bodies we've ever had out there. And that's just because the money didn't flow into the fund now as quickly as it normally does.
Thank you, Darrell.
But I think we got that correct.
Yeah. That, yes.
That very last paragraph, uh, though, is that the overall county budget? Well, they're talking about how, uh, our actual expenditures exceed our budget appropriations? And they recommend that in the future we resolve that? Is that, am I reading that right? Is that the overall county budget? That's not just the highway, right?
Not like everybody, they have to do that. They want us to make sure we have the balance budget and that's for all county offices. And then we have enough, uh, uh, money in our fund balance to, to pay the expenditures recur.
No other questions? We'll move forward. Uh, consider approval of the school budget amendment, federal project amendment number one and two. The general purpose amendment number one. This was approved by the Education and the Budget Committee. They have a motion.
Did we, excuse me, did we want to acknowledge it?
We don't have to.
Oh, we don't have to?
Uh-uh, no, it's, it's an acknowledgement. Uh, we have a motion by Phillip. Second by Donna. Any discussion? Ms. Victoria, will you call Robb please?
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes.
Geraldine Walker.
Yes.
Phillip Tally.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Gil McCowen.
Yes.
Don Rickart.
Yes.
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
All four. Motion passed. Next, we consider approval for a budget amendment, General Fund One-on-One, amendment number two. The Highway Fund One Thirty-One, amendment number one. This was approved by the Budget Committee. Motion by Cindy. Second by Randall. Any discussion? None being had. Ms. Victoria, will you call Robb?
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Don Rickart.
Yes.
Gil McCowen.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Shane Walker. Shane Walker.
Yes.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Geraldine Walker.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Randall Boswell.
Yes. All four. Motion passed. We'll consider approval for the surplus items, the county clerk's copier, the thirteen Dodge Durango, the solid waste tanks and container to be sold at Cooper's, the transfer an ambulance unit twelve to the maintenance department, and donate the K nine unit to Clay County Sheriff's Department. This was approved by the Highway and County Property Committee. They have a motion on that. Motion by Robbie, seconded by Jesse, any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Shane.
The table was stored to the maintenance, that's the old unit twelve?
The old one, yes.
Unit twelve.
Was it not the unit twelve?
One that he's given yet. As far as I know, I was just making sure.
He, he went over there and got the one that he was told to get. Was it unit twelve or fourteen?
I don't know which one you're supposed to get, I reckon you got the fourteen.
Okay. Uh,
Number needs to be changed or, I don't know.
Well, we need to, he did, he got the one he was told to get, so, uh, we need to straighten out that number though. Uh, Donna, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, the, the K nine unit to Clay County.
Mm-hmm.
Donna, can you, can you, uh, elaborate on that?
I can.
What's going on?
I can. Uh, that is one of the Ford Explorers, it's got about two hundred thousand miles on it, and it's, it's kind of turning into the money bucket. And we're getting away from the Fords, so the actual K nine Ks for the dog in the back, we can't use it in these Durangos. So, the sheriff from over in Clay County had called me, uh, back a month or two ago, and they have an Explorer that's still good, but they need the cage. But that's a bear to take in and out with automatic door popper and stuff to let the dog in and out, like if a handler's in an emergency situation, the dog's got to get out. It's a beast to put them in or to take them out. So, we want to donate the vehicle and all to them, let them deal with doing all the work to get that cage. We could sell it, but guys are in worse shape than we are whenever it comes to financing. So, and it, it goes to have a sister county.
I just wanted everybody to know what, what, what the deal was.
Yeah, it, it's not like we're taking a new unit off the road to give to Clay County. This is, no, not at all. It, it, it's something that should have been surplus, that was still in service, uh, probably should have been taken off the road two years ago.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Ms. Geraldine.
Back to the ambulance, is that, the ambulance not something that we use with ambulance service? I mean, I know we're short of ambulances, right?
It was mileage out, uh, and they were taking it off the road, and was replacing it by one of the three. It's the, the ambulance that we got.
That one, yeah, that, two hundred and something thousand miles on the truck itself, but the motor had like twenty or thirty, forty thousand or something. Or it was a new motor.
That's the one that we, that was supposed to come off the road, that we were replacing by one of the new ones.
Stephen, I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say maintenance department, what maintenance department's getting that?
The, the county maintenance vehicle.
Okay, so, okay.
It'll be turned into a county maintenance vehicle. So he can keep his parts and his tools in there and not have to go to hanging limb and then turn around and have to come all the way back, and get what he needs and go all the way back up there and need something else and have to go backwards and forth. So now he can have all the tools there with him. Any other questions? None to be had, Ms. Victoria, will you please call Rob?
Greg Nivens.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we, do, do we have to change the number since he's got four units, the twelve?
We just want to verify that before we change anything else.
William?
Can we just, I can take that and off and put it on next month's agenda, we'll check it. I'm sure about right now, but load on the rest of it.
Motion to the, make sure that he's got the right ambulance, and I hope he has because he's had it for two weeks. Uh, and I thought if he had had the wrong ambulance, they would have already had said something by now. You know what I mean? Uh, if everybody over there, I mean, would have had a phone call or something by now after two weeks.
Is the number an issue here?
I think-
We're gonna make, give him the half of the ones. I don't see why we don't-
We'll correct the number.
Yeah.
If it's fourteen,
Not allowed.
Fourteen, not going to do, if next month we can change things.
We can change the number.
I would, I would do it.
The number on the end is fourteen.
Well, I'm sure they went by the bid number.
Well, they went by what, he, he went over there and got what he was told to get, what they were.
How fit was the old, old unit twelve? I don't think it had a turbo on it, the motor was possibly wrong to hit. I don't think it could be twelve.
Okay. Uh, the one he had is running because he drove it up. So you think it might be fourteen?
It wouldn't be driving twelve.
Okay. Well, he has the ambulance that he's supposed to have. Can I change the number, amend the number next few, or next week, amended if it needs to be amended? Okay. Ms. Victoria, will you please call Rob?
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Dorothy Clark.
Yes.
Gil McCowen.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Uh, no.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Geraldine Walker.
No.
Roger Carr.
No.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes. So, three no's. Then yes is motion passed. Consider approval to award the bid, Carville, for the four sheriff's vehicles, the amount one hundred seventy-four thousand, and this was approved by the Budget Committee. Robbie made a motion, I have a second, uh, correct second. Robbie made a motion, correct second. Any discussion?
So you've only got one bid on this, correct?
We only have one bid. And it was put out there just saying, because every other bid has ever been put out there.
And if I could ask, uh, add, and Mr. John, you might be able to add something too, the prices were more reasonable than we thought they were coming in, Alan.
Yes, for one bid, yes.
Stephen, do you remember where, uh, the bid came from?
Carville.
Yeah.
Uh, in fact, it's, that's in Nashville area, isn't it, Carville?
I'm pretty sure it's up around Greenville.
Greenville, East Tennessee?
Yes, I'm pretty sure that that's what they are.
You've had a bid from there before, your last ones you got was from Carville, or you had a bid from them before?
The last ones we got came from East Tennessee, I don't know if that's the name of the dealership, but I'm thinking it was the same dealership that got the bid this time.
So the notice gets far though.
It covers statewide, it's-
That was already got the package on it.
Yes. It actually came in cheaper than the state bid did. Uh, Ms. Victoria, will you please call?
I am.
Oh, sorry.
Did I read in there, John, that your, that yours are going to get gray? The color gray? Or black rather, black?
Yes.
Blackish?
White ones, the waiting list to get white ones are extremely long, so-
Is that the reason why you went with black? Okay.
Any other questions? Sorry, Donna, I didn't tell you anything.
That's okay.
No other questions, Ms. Victoria, will you please call Rob?
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Geraldine Walker.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Gil McCowen.
Yes.
Dorothy Clark.
Yes.
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes. All four. Consider approval for applying for the Accessible Small and Rural Communities Grant through the Library Association for Handicap Accessible Doors. The grant is the amount of twenty thousand dollars with no match, and this was approved by the Budget Committee. Uh, motion made by Cindy and, uh, Geraldine Shane. Any discussion? Sorry, I give me time to write.
All right.
I'm writing with you. You'll call Rob, please.
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Dorothy Clark.
Yes.
Gil McCowen.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Geraldine Walker.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes. All four. Motion passed. Consider approval to award the GPS monitoring bid to the Community Probation Service in the amount of eighteen hundred dollars. Be approved by the Budget Committee, and let me explain that just for a second. So, uh, this was, uh, passed and needed to be, uh, done in July, but everybody was late finding out about it. So when we found out about it, we had to do the bidding process, and it takes a little time. Uh, now this, it comes to no cost to the county whatsoever. So, the only way, or reason why you would have to have this ankle monitoring system is if you had some kind of aggravated offense, am I correct? And, uh, they come, you have to pay for that, uh, the defendant has to pay for that themselves before they're able to leave. So they order it, they pay for it, and then, once it comes in, they get it turned on, then they can get bailed. But they can't be bailed out, or bonded out, sorry, until they have their ankle monitoring system. Then they will have to pay for the, uh, monthly monitoring and all that things. So this comes at no cost to the county, uh, and if I'm not mistaken, Memphis, uh, has got this bound up in court, so it might change late. But as of right now, uh, this is the company that won, um, and it is the, uh, Community Probation Services, and, and it's an amount of eighteen hundred dollars beginning, no cost to the county, and all the cost goes on, uh, the, uh, the one that controls it.
Will, will these, uh, units cost eighteen hundred dollars?
The units will cost eighteen hundred dollars. And they will have to pay for the units, their setup, out of their own pocket. Any motion? By Philip, second. By, uh, Jesse? Any other discussion?
So you're saying that the defendant's going to have to come up with eighteen hundred dollars? If they're found guilty of domestic violence, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it would have to be, uh, aggravated.
Or aggravated, yeah.
With a weapon or something, and then they-
There, the charge has to be aggravated one way or another, and before they're able to post bond, to get back out. Uh, say I get arrested for aggravated domestic assault, I go in jail, not only would I have to post bond, but with a new state law that's there, then I would have to leave there with an ankle monitoring device, GPS device. So then I would have to pay for that out of pocket, along with my bond, or I'd have to have that on before I would be eligible for bond.
What if they didn't have the one?
Then they send you to jail.
Is that, is that eighteen hundred dollars? I didn't think that that was the eighteen hundred dollars for the ankle, ankle on.
Yes, ma'am.
It's eighteen hundred dollars.
When the bid was open the other night, that includes the device, the mounting, uh, the monitoring, that, that, that's what it's going to cost them upfront to get out.
Okay.
But now, it ha, there has to be some aggravation with the charge.
Okay.
And then they're charged six dollars a day for the remote, and five dollars for tracking.
Right.
That puts it into the contract.
Yeah.
Bid contract. Hundred dollars for GPS hold unit. Charges two fifty, the charges block and cables thirty dollars, five hundred dollars for insulation block. So this company's going to do all that in their house, once they pay eighteen hundred dollars to get out here.
They come to the jail.
It, it has to be done at the jail before they're even eligible to post bond. So this will be done before they would be released on bond.
Do they owe me?
But they will cost you any extra work, right?
I mean, actually, it's also with, they're clear.
But this, again, this is the new state law that was passed in July that nobody had a clue about, until they said, hey, you got to do this. And, uh, if I'm not mistaken, this, this was the only bid. So, uh, any others? Any other questions?
Will it come back to the county whenever they?
It will not belong to us at all.
If, they keep it, once they pay the eighteen hundred, they keep it then?
To the Community Probation Services, it won't be, county has no doing with it at all.
But what, I think they found out guilty.
That would be, uh, judge question, or state question, the state law that put them, I think, so, but that's nothing to do with us. That's the reason why Memphis is trying to fight it. Ms. Victoria, if you will, please call Rob.
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Dorothy Clark.
Yes.
Gil McCowen.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Geraldine Walker.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes. All four. Motion passed. Um, consider approval to award the HVAC unit bid, uh, to Cool, heating and cooling, in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred, and that was approved by the Budget Committee. Um, motion by Patrick. Second by Robbie. Any discussion?
Where's it even going?
On top of the jail. Any other question?
Is that the only bid?
No, we had two bids. This one came in the last. Yes, sir.
We had two bids. First time they bid different. One bid twelve, half ton, the other bid like a-
Twenty ton.
Twenty ton. They had a, so, it was only two of them, so they both agreed, agreed to go back and rebid, where they bid the same one, and then we only got one bid.
So there was a bit of confusion, uh, the lead company and, uh, Cool, heat and cooling, both had the bids. But one bid a twenty ton, one bid a twelve and a half ton, the correct one was twelve and a half ton. So both parties agreed to rebid, but because we were rebidding and they were the only two that bid, we let them rebid the, the twelve and a half ton, and Cool, heat and cooling came out. Uh, the Cool, heat and cooling had the twelve and a half ton the first time, but they was gracious enough to understand and let lead company, uh, do, uh, do it again. So, the Cool, heat and cooling still had the same bid. Any other questions? None to be had, Ms. Victoria, will you please call Rob?
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Dorothy Clark.
Yes.
Gil McCowen.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Jeff Long. Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Jolene Walker?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
All four. Motion passed. Uh, consider approval for the T D, uh, T, sorry, two dehumidifiers to be installed at the Hardy Chapel Community Center in the amount of sixty-four hundred. And this was approved by the Highway County Property Bill. Yes, ma'am. Uh, Rob, or, uh, Cindy made the motion, I'm sorry, and Philip, uh, second. Any discussion on this?
I assume the sixty-four is the dehumidifiers are going to save the floors because we'll have.
The committee. It been bowing? Uh, and whenever they went under there, there was, uh, this last floor that they went under, it sunk so much, and, and it was kind of. Roddy, that when you touch the wood, it just.
It's rocky, yeah.
Yeah. So they recommended doing the dehumidifier to save the, the floors. Uh, and so we replaced the floor, and, um, last year we replaced the floor in the kitchen, this year we replace another room. Uh, and they came to us today with a letter, uh, asking us to, uh, look at a, uh, like not redoing a floor, but kind of having finished the, the gym, or they do the, uh, volleyball and stuff like that. So we're going to look at that, we'll, we'll discuss that, uh, further, but, uh, we need to get something in effect to have to save the floors, or, or we're repairing it and replacing it. Any other, any other discussion? None to be had, Ms. Victoria, will you call her up, please?
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Darrell Clark?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Jolene Walker?
Yes.
Jess Bowman?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
All four, and motion passed. Uh, so we need to consider approval for the second reading for the nonprofit. And I'll read them, I'll need a motion second, and I'll read them off. Uh, motion by Cindy second, by Jesse. The nonprofit list, uh, is as follows, the Overton County Rescue Squad will get ten thousand one hundred dollars. The County Volunteer Fire Department will get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This will be distributed out between the twelve. The Holland J. Stevens Center will get two thousand dollars. The Chamber of Commerce will get twenty-one thousand. The Retired Senior Volunteer Program, R S V P is what they call it, will get a thousand dollars. The, uh, Honor Guard, the VFW Post will get, uh, twenty-five hundred. The Court Appointed Special Advocate, known as CASA, will get two thousand dollars. And the American Legion will get fifteen hundred. And, uh, while we're on this nonprofit, I would like to, and, uh. She is not here today, but I would like to recognize somebody and at a further, uh, appointment, uh, bring her in to rec, recognize her properly. Uh, on October twenty-fourth, uh, Ms. Mary Ruth will celebrate fifty years with this program, with the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. Uh, she's been a van driver and, and the coordinator, uh, and she's celebrating fifty years, and she's not retired. So she enjoys her job, and she'll do it, except she can't do it no more. So, uh, congratulations to her, uh, they, uh. Had her a little dinner today, uh, but, uh, we would like to, uh, to do a more formal congratulations for fifty years for the senior volunteer. Uh, with nonprofits being called off, any other questions, discussions? None to be had, Ms. Victoria, will you call her up?
Greg Nivens?
Yes.
Darrell Clark?
Yes.
Gil McCowen?
Yes.
Cindy Robbins?
Yes.
Donna Savage?
Yes.
Shane Walker?
Yes.
Robbie Melton?
Yes.
Jeff Long?
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy?
Yes.
Philip Tally?
Yes.
Jolene Walker?
Yes.
Roger Carr?
Yes.
Randall Boswell?
Yes.
Jesse Bowman?
Yes.
All four. And that was the second reading. Motion passed. So the next part is for, uh, the judicial commissioners to consider the approval of the three named in the resolution, uh, twenty-two-four dash one zero two one dash oh one. Uh, this is for the three judicial commissioners named Lacy Savage, Nathaniel Presley, and Holm Garrett. This was approved by the Public Safety Committee. I need a motion by Randall. Second by Robbie. Uh, any other discussion or questions? None to be had, all four say aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. All four. Uh, consider approval for notary at large, uh, Tina Williams renewal, Duwan Bockman new, Andrea Ayers, uh, renewal, uh, Hannah Strong new, uh, dual R Johnson new, and Sean Cracktree renewal. Our motion by Geraldine, and second by Philip. Any other dis, questions, discussions? None to be had, all four say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise. All four. Uh, this time we'll recognize, uh. Yep?
Uh. I'd like to, uh, have the rules suspended and add to the agenda tonight for the county commission to discuss whenever they want to get their agendas. I talked to Mr. Curtis, I asked that to be done already tonight, uh, uh, but I talked to Charles Curtis about this from C T A S. Couple weeks ago when we went to the commissioner meeting down there, and, uh, he said that the county commission sets the precedence of when we get our agendas. Now, what he, his words, not mine, was. The public gets it forty-eight hours, but the county commission sets the precedence when they want to get their agenda. So I'd like to have the, uh, rules suspended and add that to the agenda for us to discuss when we would like to get our agendas.
Okay, you know, just one second, I guess, to kind of.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find in here, I, I want to make sure this is done correctly. Ms. Lillian, does this require a two-thirds vote, a majority vote, uh, uh? Because I have not talked with Mr. Charlie Curtis at C T A S, so I need, uh, I need some time to investigate this as well.
There's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules and add the, uh, to discuss, uh, when the county commission wants to get the agenda, is that right?
Can I, can I talk to you about the agendas? Um, how many of you picked up your agenda prior to the meeting before? Few of you, not everybody does, we, we deliver to you most time here at court. But, so, a lot of times we don't get the agendas out because we still have the meetings the week prior, and so we have to wait on that meeting to end to be able to put it all together to send it out. But as soon as we get done with those meetings, those are, um, available for you guys to pick up, we call you, we email it to you. Uh, she puts it out on the table, uh, they're busting their high end, all of them, to get these agendas out, to make sure that everything that is, went through the committee. Is put in for this commission meeting. And, uh. Like I said, we have, uh, a, a committee meeting on a Thursday prior to the Monday court. It's hard to get you a packet, or it won't be on the agenda, and a lot of times you'll want what went through the committee meeting on the agenda. So we get the, we get the agenda to you just as quick as we can get it to you. Uh, I mean, you can set a timeline, and it won't be fixed. If we're still having committee meetings.
You can, you can always do the attendants, though, when there's something that has to be added to the agenda. If you have a meeting on, let's say, Thursday, we have a meeting on Monday, if we get our agendas on, let's say, Tuesday, and you need to add something to it, just like I asked Taylor this morning to add that to this. That's what you do.
I asked her to, uh, to tell you, I'd like to talk to you about that, to explain to you, uh, the reason.
I never got a, I, I mean.
And I would like to talk to Charlie Curtis myself, but we try to get it out to you a week in advance. That is our goal, to get it out a week in advance. We try to get it to you a week before. And as soon as we get it out to you, we put it on for the public to have as well.
Well, I'm not trying to be difficult, because I've never got by a reading before.
We're trying. We, we are, we're trying. I'd like you to come up to the office and, and spend some time with us, and, and see what we go through, and, and see us trying to put this stuff together. Uh, and maybe you might be able to understand where I'm coming from, I mean, I, I get where you're coming from, but we're doing the best we can to get it to you just as quick as we can. If you've got more than one person working on this, it's not just one person's life, it's just multiple people trying to get all the information, chase down the chairs, give the minutes, all this stuff. I mean, it's not. It's not an easy task, but. They're trying their best to get it to you as quick.
I'm not saying they're not doing their job, Stephen, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that I blocked the agenda a little bit earlier, so I can be more, yes, I got my agenda last Thursday. This morning I got a different agenda. I regret to be up to this morning when I asked, uh, to have that put on the, the, the agenda, an amendment put on the agenda. So yes, I, I realize that they are doing their job, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but they, they've got to understand, we've got to do our homework too.
I understand that, that's right.
We need to go through this. We have questions like crazy, and, and that, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
And it, it's hard to do that. That's, that's a pretty thick package to have to go through, and I got it about eight-thirty this morning. When I thought I had the packet, but this was so.
What changed on the packet?
I don't know. Actually, Taylor just told me this morning that something went wrong and it wasn't all together, so she made everybody new, new agendas. So I, I don't know.
I don't know what changed on the agenda, uh, myself. I don't know if it was an order that twenty-hundred was. But everything that was in the packet was in the, should be. But we will try our best to get it out a week ahead of time. And that's what we strive to do. That's what I have asked, asked them to do, to get it out as quickly as we can.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Does it go on the website forty-eight hours prior to the meeting, or when?
As soon as we get it done, everything will be on there forty-eight hours ahead of time, or we will not have a meeting.
Okay, when we come up with the permission slip thing, we were told we had to have our permission slip five days prior to the meeting to be able to talk. So where does that leave us standing? If we, if we have to sign up five days before the meeting? If we don't.
Well, I didn't make them sign up tonight, I asked everybody that wanted to speak if they were allowed to speak.
Yeah, that was tonight, but the other times we have been.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, so where does that go?
Back to our meeting, guys, we. We'll try to get it out as quick as we can, Donna, we'll work on that, but as far as voting on anything right now, I don't, I don't see that, uh, we'll have to vote right now. I, I want to be able to talk to Charlie, and. At my office, we're trying our best to get it out to you and the public as quickly as we can.
Yeah, honey, you can make the motion in, in table with until next meeting. I think that's November fourth, is it?
November fourth is next meeting.
So I need to make the motion to table it till he talks to Charlie Curtis?
They were just, they were just asking for a discussion.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, just a discussion.
Ask for a discussion.
Okay. Would you do it next month? I might get a motion, I'll say.
Motion second, to discuss, put it on discussion about time, the agenda time.
Who second?
Uh, see, uh, Donna made a motion to, uh, tape, or dis, discussion about. Trying to figure the word, Donna made a motion. For discussion. About timeline. Agendas. And Donna said, or Donna made a motion to, you say? To be brought up. That next court. That next chamber. All four say aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise?
So does this mean that we don't have to get permission now to talk at the county court meetings, or we do?
We'll still follow the same guidelines until further notice.
The guidelines you had tonight, right?
Until further notice, we'll fi, follow what was prior.
So we have to get a permission, sir, uh, five days before the meeting?
Just come up and, and let me know, I want everybody that asked a question to be able to ask a question prior, or what's on the agenda, okay? And you're able to do that. The best place to find these, uh, out is everything that's on the agenda is every committee meeting we have that month. That's, that's the whole agenda, the, the committee meetings we had that month. If you can go back to the calendar, and you can come to those committee meetings and see those agendas on that committee meeting, if you see something, you have a question, that's the place to go ask a question at the committee meetings, that's where. If you get more, hopefully, make. Get one permission slip, I love, is that enough to take care of all of them? We're, we're making it more difficult than what it is.
No, we're not, Stephen, you won't let us ask in committee meetings. We're told to comply.
Not supposed to interrupt the public, but give me time for the public. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, at this time, I'll pass, uh, Miss Shannon Cantrell for the Livingston Overton County Chamber of Commerce to, uh, come give us an update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. I'll keep it brief today, um, so I, I talked to y'all about the tourism enhancement grant that we applied for last meeting. And we did receive that grant, that grant is a hundred thousand dollar grant that will help to, uh, it'll help for the development and implementation of ways, uh, wayfinding signage in our downtown and around the city. Um. The signs will replace some of the, the outdated signage that we already have, and it will also. And it will also put new signage in other areas where it's needed to direct people from the bypass to the downtown area. Also, um, I'm hoping there's gonna be a little room left in the budget to maybe be able to point to some, at least in the direction of certain areas outside in the county as well. So, we have a year to have this project completed. Hopefully, uh, T dot will work really well with us and we can get the placement we need for the signage. Also, if everybody knows that following will be happening this weekend, um, it's always a big day for us because it brings about eight thousand people into our area. And we get, uh, quite a bit of sales tax revenue from that. Um, so just so that everyone knows what the agenda is that day and where the different things will be taking place. It starts at twelve, technically, technically it doesn't end until about nine at night. So the trick-or-treating on the downtown square will start at noon, that will go till four o'clock. That includes bouncy houses, penny zoo, pony rides, wagon rides, space penny, gangs, food trucks, and a lot more. Then, from twelve to seven at Central Park, we'll be having a fall market. So we've allowed vendors to come into play this year, but they are all down at Central Park. Also, the Van Cousin will play live at three-thirty in the park. We'll also show the movie Big Juice at five P M, not the new one, but the old one. Um, and then the museum will be hosting that museum where the exhibits come to life from five to nine. And if you've not seen that, that's definitely something you should go and experience. And lastly, our haunted downtown walking tours, they will take place at the courthouse starting at seven P M and then another at eight-thirty. To get all the information, buy tickets for the haunted walking tours, you can go to our website, which is discoverlivingstonetn.com. All the info is there. And if somebody still needs to set up a booth, just call me at this point at the chamber, cause I really want to get our map and stuff out by in the business all winter. Christmas break, just some basics about it real quick. Signups will start on November fourth. We have our first meeting tomorrow, so we will have the theme, date, and time announced hopefully by this Friday. It's amazing how many calls I've already got at the Christmas break. All I can think about right now is following. I'm not ready for Christmas just yet. But I think, I think that's all I have. Unless y'all have some questions.
Do you have a date for the Christmas break? Is it-
Well, here, typically, we would have it the second Saturday in December. Uh, now that falls a little bit later in the month than what it normally would. And there are quite a few communities around us who are already having theirs on the fourteenth. I've had some questions, are you really gonna have it on the fourteenth with so many others going on? I don't know. Uh, we're, we'll, we'll get together and talk about that in the morning. If y'all have some thoughts and want to pass that along, I'm more than happy to listen.
Up and down the avenue.
They're not doing it at all?
Cause we see it's not on the radio.
Yeah, cause we're standing at Avenue.
Okay. That's interesting.
I haven't heard that.
Yeah, it is.
Turned it up with churches.
Christmas break? Yep.
Little, little drama there, Stephen. We'll, we'll let you hold that up over.
No, no drama.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I heard, uh, Overton County had a six-point four increase in tourism revenue, which was the highest in the Cumberland area.
Yes, that is very true. Thank you for that reminder. We did have a six-point four increase in tourism expenditures year over year, so hopefully, I mean, we've got plenty of room to increase that even more, I think, this next year, so definitely working towards that.
If you may, if. Thank you, Ms. Shannon.
You're welcome.
Next court meeting will be November the fourth. Uh, second, uh, Monday falls on Veterans Day, so we moved it up to the fourth. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to recognize, uh, the woman from this, uh, from Carson, Deuce Steppe. Yep.
Not to put you on the spot or nothing, but that-
Did you tell everybody who you are and who you represent?
Yeah.
No.
I'm, I'm actually, I work with CASA Overton County here. Our office is on Church Street. We serve children who are in foster care, who have autism aggressive, and who are going through the court system. We advocate for children on a level one-on-one basis. We work with like one or two cases of children at a time, so we can be a certain adult in life throughout the course of that case, and sometimes after, if that is. And we are always the people volunteers, so if they're willing to come volunteer with us, and I guess you can find our website, casasatencostvalley.org, and talk to me and kind of try to promote the meeting. And I appreciate you recognizing me.
Miss Ashley received, uh, money from the opioid to help with this, so, so, so she's received money for help here. And we're real proud.
We'll get her out of her shot, Stephen. All right.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Of course, uh, of course, the update on the Monroe Beer Center, have they come along?
Well, they were waiting on the ractors and the windows. And, uh, that's where we're at right now. They're waiting on that to come in. They had to order those and they, they're expecting them to come in. Uh, they said two or three weeks ago, two or three weeks. So, when they get that in, they'll be able to, uh, move a little faster, but that's what they're waiting on right now.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
What's happening with the water project for Allen and Ridgeman and Dry Hall area? It was supposed to have been completed or started before October, and there's been no sign of anything. Where's the money appropriated? What's going on?
So, uh, from my knowledge, the North Overton is working on it. Uh, they bidding it out, they're working on it. West Overton-
But nothing has been started about the project, right?
Uh, North Overton, I think they have.
Ridgeman and Dry Hall hasn't done anything, and I talked to the, the, the board, the water board in Ridgeman, and no, nothing has been done. It's supposed to be in the engineers' hands, but I know the money, it's been there for like two years. And we've got people in that Dry Hall, it's a four-mile stretch that doesn't have any water. The wells have dried up, the springs have dried up, and one of them is an eighty-seven-foot wall that has a tank sitting on the hillside with a hosepipe coming into the house. And I'm really wondering when they're gonna get this started.
I had the same question to them, uh, when I called them two weeks ago, when they said hopefully by the end of October, they'll be ready to bid it out.
It's not been bid out?
It still has not been bid out.
Okay. So the money is where?
The engineers have been paid, but that's it.
Okay.
Uh-
This is a shame.
It is.
This is a shame that people right now in two thousand twenty-four do not have access to city water if they want it. That's, that's a disgrace.
All I can do is call and ask. I don't, we're not over the water departments. Um, uh, Ms. Hassel's in the same shape. She has a well that's right beside the old dump.
I know.
Uh, and she, she calls me on a regular basis at, uh, for an update as well, and I call them and ask them, come on, work one way or-
Somebody is responsible.
Yep.
Uh, somebody needs to get the ball rolling.
Uh, I know, but when we, uh, were in D C, we asked for an extension. Uh, and they said that, uh, most likely, uh, there will be no extension. Uh, so they're gonna have to get the ball rolling soon. But that's, that's as far as I know. I, I knew I, because I was worried that nothing, it still hasn't been done.
I know, and that's a big complaint, as I certainly am.
Yeah. It, it has its deadline. Yes, yes, you're right. But you can reach out to, uh, the water board, uh, if you just wanna know who the water board is, I'll give you the name, contact, contact. All right? The, uh, question? Yes, sir.
When's, uh, when are we looking at filling the vacancy for the seat?
Uh, we're putting it in the paper. And so what we put in the paper, we're gonna take applications. Uh, and that way, we're gonna take it through the last day, well, not the last day, the twenty-ninth of November, cause the last day falls on the weekend. It'll be on a Friday, and close the business day, and that'll give you some time in December uh, to select who y'all want to replace, uh, fill that seat. Uh, and once y'all decide, they'll start the first year. Uh, but we're running it in the paper. We, we sent it over, uh, to them today. So it'll be run, run in there. So we'll take the whole month of, uh, applications, the whole month of November. We just wanna make sure it's done right. We, uh, went through the law, we legalized it, and just making sure that how we filled the seat was done the right way.
Going through the empty process with each one, like the-
We can, yes.
What, what committee is that gonna be with?
Uh, I don't know. It's a good question, Greg. Thank you.
Person name?
Effie Scott, no, I don't know. Well, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
Any other? All right, interning votes in the under. Uh, Phillip, second. Rob, uh, all four say aye?
Aye.
Uh, all four.
God, thank you.
Yes.